For June 21st, 2021 to order roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Present.
Counselor Mellon. Counselor Gardner.
Present.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Present.
And President Kulturitis.
Present. All right, please stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody tonight. It's always nice to see so many friendly faces out there. All right, that brings us to our proclamation for Juneteenth, 2021. Recognizing June 19th, 2021, and Juneteenth, National Independence Day for the town of Munster, Indiana. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on September 22nd, 1862, to be enforced on January 1st, 1863, prohibiting enslavement in those states and areas in secession from the Union. And whereas many enslaved people not in the secession states won their freedom by joining the Union Army when President Lincoln, at the urging of Frederick Douglass, proclaimed that enslaved people entering the army would be freed. And whereas the news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States for more than two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation and months after the conclusion of the Civil War. And whereas on the 19th of June, 1865, Union soldiers led by General boarding Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with the news that the Civil War has ended and that these enslaved people were free. And with the reading of General Order Number Three, the former enslaved people, Americans of African descent, celebrated with praise, music, dance, prayer, establishing the first Juneteenth Freedom Celebration in history. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Joseph R. Biden Jr. signed into law the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, which designated Juneteenth National Independence Day as a legal public holiday. And whereas Juneteenth and emancipation celebrations include all races, ethnicities, religions, and nationalities, and citizens across the country acknowledge a period in our history that has influenced our society, a society that advanced the ideals of liberty and justice for all. Therefore, does the town council, does the Munster Town Council hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, a Juneteenth National Independence Day, the town of Munster, Indiana? As we acknowledge, the end of slavery is an important and enriching part of the history and heritage of the United States, and our history should be regarded as a means for understanding the past and solving their challenges of the future.
Mr. President, I would take a motion to recognize June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth National Independence Day in the town of Munster and proclaim that.
I second the motion. Any discussion?
Just to say, this is, uh, there was a resident who reached out with inquiries about how to celebrate Juneteenth and what we can do as a town, so this proclamation is a result of that. I'm glad to see it here.
Roll call.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Brings us to public swearing in a new Munster police officer, Tamborini.
Officer.
One second.
Hang on one second. So she can get a couple pictures.
Are all of our cameras ready?
You're ready.
All right, very good. Let's do it. I, Luke Tamborini.
I, Luke Tamborini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the ordinances of the town of Munster.
And the ordinances of the town of Munster.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As police officer.
As police officer.
For the town of Munster, Indiana.
For the town of Munster, Indiana.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to Munster. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That brings us to public hearing, CDBG Lake County Commission's Community Development Agreement documents. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this? Close the public hearing on this. That brings us to public comment. The person public comment is limited to two minutes, maximum per person five minutes for group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. The chair at sole discretion may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics as any and may end the open to the public session. All speakers will be timed by the clerk treasurer. This meeting shall not exceed 20 minutes. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. Have a question or comment about an item on the agenda, please email those questions and comments to danderson@munster.org. Mr. Anderson will ensure that all submissions are shared with the elected officials of the town. The submissions will be entered in two minutes of the meeting. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. Anybody wishes to speak tonight, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Mike, come over here, 1833 Tulow Lane. Two things. Number one, thanks for getting the bushes trimmed. It's nice to be able to not have to go around all that stuff. Second thing is, can somebody try to find out from NIPSCO why we are having so much problem over there in Fair Meadows Estates with power outages? This is the third outage I've had since with the Mylar, the incident with Mylar balloons. And it wasn't raining that bad when our power went out just before midnight. And like I said, we, for the longest period of time, we had no issues. Now we're having issues constantly. And it's getting to be a pain in the posterior. So if somebody here can find out, because they used to have that same issue, I guess, somewhere else in town, and NIPSCO came and gave whatever excuses.
Dustin, I'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
I did receive one email from a resident that specifically wanted this question read, and it was from a Mr. Robert Thomas. And the question was related to parking and the South Shore Railroad. Will there be parking for the train station? I do not want commuters parking in the condo parking lots. High-density housing is mentioned. Is there something being planned? I can address those if you'd like me to, or we can just enter them as a record. High-density housing was mentioned in a work study that I would characterize as nothing more different than a postcard you might receive as a homeowner saying, if you're interested in moving, call this number, right? It was a sales solicitation, and council did the professional thing and gave the person who wanted to do a project a listen, and no further action was taken. So I would hope that we would all be so professional and patient as our council in dealing with that particular developer.
Just one second. Can the people in the back here, Mr. Anderson, speak? Okay, I just want to make sure you have anything here. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So the other question was, where will parking be for the train station? I'm assuming, since the locus of the question seems to be around Ridge and Manor, they're specifically asking about that question. Parking will be provided. There'll be, when it's completely constructed, approximately 250 spaces on the west side of Manor, directly north of Ridge and the existing gas station there. There is a concern about the condo parking lots. I think that's a reasonable concern if I happen to live in those condos. And there's a couple of solutions there. One, the condos are private property. They could have a towing firm monitor the private parking lots there. And we can also investigate the idea of neighborhood parking permits so that you don't have fugitive parking on the streets, avoiding the lots and making life difficult for our residents. But a bridge to be crossed by council for sure in the future.
Thank you, Dustin. Anybody else that wishes to speak tonight?
Dustin, would you please send me an email that you forward that email?
I will close the open to the public session. That brings us down to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda. Very second.
I'll second.
Very discussion.
Yes, please. Sorry, I'm busy. I haven't stopped here this evening, so I'm doing extra due to duty here. I have to be extra diligent, so I may ask for a few repeats. I did want to bring up on the consent agenda, Item C, which is the 2022 budget calendar. The counselors would please review that and be certain that they can attend the meeting, the key meetings. And the key meetings would be the council approval, the adoption on the 18th, and the pre-adoption hearing on the 4th. I think the only conflict that we may potentially have is on the 5th begins the Ames Idea Summit. And from what I understand, having never attended before, if we choose to go, we can leave Tuesday morning, and most of the festivities start Tuesday afternoon. So that shouldn't be a problem for anyone if you're thinking that a possible conflict. We have.
These are all Mondays, the meeting days.
Yes, they are. They're regular meetings. We can change them now easily, but not as easily as we get closer. So just be aware that this is part of today's consent agenda. And if you have any conflict, please let us know sooner than later.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The only other items I would like to mention is with regards to the budget calendar. While a lot of this stuff is the state revenue portion, I would be interested in having any kind of further discussions with the council in a work-study environment or anything along that nature to discuss the broad direction of some of the general projects, employee salaries, some of those overall reaching topics, I think would be good to discuss prior to the budget adoption.
I would, not that that requires a second, but I would double down on that, I guess. There's a lot of changes going on this year. We're gonna learn about the streetscape. We need to figure out how to do budgeting for that. There's been ARP funds come in. So yeah, I would love to join a work-study on the budget.
Again, I'd almost recommend that be sooner than later. So we have, because we'll start generating a lot of the budget. The timetable internally in our office is with the new software, we have someone coming from the SNA to work with us. The 6th of July budget worksheet should be out to the departments after that, within a week or that week. And then we'll start pulling in things together. So direction sooner is much preferred, so.
Great. Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero.
There's nothing under old business that brings us to new business. Item A is ordinance 1830, virtual meetings.
I do want to note on this, I had posted an update to the memo in which I'm asking that it be, that we waive the readings and pass it on first read, and that didn't get updated to this. But let me briefly summarize what this is regarding. We've had discussions before about virtual meetings, and some of the things that we have to have is you must be seen and heard. And if even one of the counselors or board members are electronic, you must do a roll call vote, which I think we've been very good about doing so far. The public must have access to the meetings. There must be 50% of the board, commission, council present, and you must attend 50% of the meetings live or in person. One thing that changed through the process of the bill being read is that you can attend two consecutive meetings electronically and then one in person, and then you can go back to another set. Keeping in mind, it won't work forever because of you gotta be at half of the meetings live. So there's a lot to be mindful of. There's a great little grid that AIM provided us with. I'm going to send this out, should we approve it this evening, to all the boards and commissioners so that they're aware. And then the board heads, for example, Mr. Vanderwood, would keep that type of attendance. I would keep it here, and any of the others. Mr. Chek, please. The minutes must identify how we're holding the meeting. We've been doing that all along as well. We're presenting meetings via Zoom, and we have to note in the minutes how the meeting was available to the public. So again, via Zoom. Mr. Westland helped with this, drafted the ordinance. Did I miss anything in the highlights?
No, I think that's, those are the highlights. In fact, they're more than just the highlights. Probably more complete than I would have gone into. I just would point out, the reason that we want you to pass this tonight is that the public emergency, the reason you're able to do virtual meetings for the last 14 months or so was because of a public emergency declaration by the governor, which is set to expire on June 30th. So once that expires, if you don't have a written policy, and in this case, an ordinance, that allows for virtual meetings, if on July 1st, a public emergency would expire and you didn't adopt this ordinance, then you would not be allowed that virtual meeting option. The reason for the somewhat limited nature of being able to participate only 50% of the time and have to come to one after you've done two virtually is that the legislature was pretty specific, and I wish we could have talked about this when Representative Andrade was here, because I've had a lot of discussions with him about it. What they didn't want was a scenario where like a snowbird left after Thanksgiving and then showed back up in March, right? Like that, that was kind of the idea behind this whole grid of 50%. Now, there is an exception to not being counted towards your 50%, and it's in Section 3C, which talks about military service, illness or a medical condition, death of a relative or an emergency involving actual or threatened injury to persons or property. So that leads to the question like, who's gonna decide with regard to a medical condition? And I think that the intent of the statute and thereby the ordinance should be that we're gonna be fairly liberal with, if someone's on quarantine because they think they've been exposed to somebody with COVID or they have a COVID-like symptom, I would say that that would go into the one of the, quote, "excused absences" that doesn't count against the 50%. So while I don't want to get it specific with excuses of why a board member would not, would want to attend virtually, if it does fall within one of these four exceptions towards the 50%, I think we need to note that in the minutes so that when we go back at the end of the year, we know. And the whole theory is, is that you're at most of the meetings, and you all, that's not a problem. But, you know, with other boards, we just need to make sure that that message kind of gets out and that we're applying it uniformly across the town.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the readings, and adopt ordinance 1830 as presented.
Very second.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Westland. Does this, uh, take consideration any kind of public input? Is that always done in person, or does talk about public input at all?
So, so when you have the Zoom option, and I would encourage you to continue to advertise all your meetings as you have been, where there's the Zoom alternative, because then that gives you the opportunity. But what the statute says is, listen, if any of the board is gonna be there, has the option to attend virtually, then the public also has to have that same opportunity. And Wendy's point was good, because there are not so much with this group, but I've seen it with other municipalities and boards where the person has their name on the screen, right? And I've kind of been guilty of that too, when you're trying to kind of multitask or whatever. But if your vote's gonna count, you've got to be able to be seen by the public, and I would encourage, you know. Also, and I guess this is worth pointing out, there's a list, and I just put my computer over there, but there's a list of items that you cannot do virtually. Pass a budget, eminent domain. Kind of your big items, right? And the theory is that those are such big items that you need to be here.
Well, the way this is worded right now, three of us physically have to be here.
No matter what, yeah.
No matter what, yeah. And if someone decides to do it offsite.
That's right.
Theory. So, in theory, you may not be able to hold a meeting.
You could have two offsite and three here. Now, for the budget meeting.
Now, two offsite.
Two offsite and three here. Those.
This week. That's one. He then show up the second week.
Right.
That's two. And then he then show for two, and he then show for two. The three of us have to be here, or else if something happens to one of us, we can't have a meeting, right? In theory.
In theory, there's gotta be three here, right? And if it's the budget, then it would have to go three. Because those people offsite cannot vote.
Cannot vote.
Right.
But we can still have a meeting if there's three people here.
That's right.
All right, and two reasons to suspend.
Well, yeah, which also means if there's two virtual and it's one of those big items, you're not gonna make your 67% necessary to ever suspend the rules.
Right, so you'll have to.
You gotta have four here to suspend the rule. So like this ordinance, if two were offsite and like, theoretically, it was one of those big items, we couldn't, right? Now, if it's a smaller.
We physically have to have three people here to hold a meeting.
That's right.
Yes, I understand. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Westland was looking for those items, just for the record. Section 5 shows adopt a budget, make a reduction in personnel, initiate a referendum, impose or increase fee, impose or increase a penalty, exercise the council's power of eminent domain, or establish imposed raise or renewed tax. If you couldn't vote on any of those, if you were not present.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just want to note that I currently am not on camera because there's no one else in the meeting, and I don't vote. So while someone might be wise to the irony, I think I'm safe in the statute.
The other irony is, is that, like Mr. Randall, could always appear virtual. If you're given a virtual alternative for the public, you're, this applies to you guys.
Right.
It doesn't apply to your professionals. You know, if I'm on vacation, I could zoom in to the meeting.
Dustin too.
Dustin too.
I'm afraid I will be on vacation next month, Counselor Schoen.
Allow the public to simultaneously attend and observe. That's it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes. Roll call please.
Are you sure?
Are you sure?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero.
Brings on to item B, Munster Police Department, new canine. All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Recently, we were approached by a resident who gifted a dog to the police department. It's named KC, yellow Labrador Retriever, a female. We sent our trainer over to look at it. He was impressed with the dog and thought it would be a good candidate for a comfort dog slash drug detection. So as we have in the past, our canine programs run completely by donation. So we look at our budget, and we feel we can comfortably get the dog trained and provide for the dog without using any taxpayer dollars. So we're asking for the authorization to bring on this dog to be the third dog on the force.
Thank you, Jay.
And by the way, the Board of Safety did vote the affirmative at our last board session.
Mr. President, I would move to authorize the police department to add a second comfort dog to the ranks.
Very second.
I'll second the motion.
Very discussion. Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us down to item C, Enterprise Fleet Management.
All right, so this is an item that discusses how the town does and could in the future acquire a portion of our fleet, right? So we have a lot of vehicles that we use to do the work that we conduct on the town's behalf. Many of those vehicles can be purchased off the lot, as it were, right? Some can't be. Big dump trucks, good steers, track excavators, things like that, back doors, back door trucks. But, you know, police interceptors, trucks, cars, SUVs used for building inspection, three-quarter ton trucks, things like that. And we acquire those in a number of different ways over time that were the contextually appropriate or the easiest or most cost-effective at the moment. And so what we kind of have is a platter of options. So for example, the police cruisers are acquired by lease purchase option. Our, you know, public works trucks are acquired traditionally with bond proceeds and then retrofitted. So what we have here is a proposal to kind of unify, more unify, the acquisition policy of the town by utilizing a professional fleet management firm, Enterprise Fleet Management. Kudos to Wendy for identifying this opportunity and making the initial connection with Enterprise Fleet Management. I was really impressed with her diligence and the diligence of Enterprise Fleet Management. So we went through a series of conversations internally with all our stakeholders, all the departments that use these vehicles. We want people to feel like they had a part in identifying this opportunity and making sure that it wasn't a thing that was like told this was going to happen to you, established buy-in. And the key kind of takeaway here is your vehicle is a depreciating asset, right? There's a sweet spot where your vehicle maintenance is pretty low, your depreciation hasn't gone all the way down. And at that opportunity, if we were to use the equity that we have in that vehicle, over time, we can save the town money by managing this asset more closely, and thereby saving a significant amount over time of town funds. The analysis that was done on our particular fleet, on our, on our vehicle age and usage, pegs the 10-year savings at around a million dollars. So like $50,000 a year, that's real money, right? Now, nothing's written in stone, but it gives a sense of scale. And I think for $50,000 a year, this is an opportunity that we should take advantage of, or at least look closer at. So what we have is a detailed analysis by Enterprise Fleet Management. And if we wanted to take advantage of this opportunity, there's four different agreements, kind of instruments that we have to adopt. One is the master equity lease agreement that governs the rights and responsibilities of each party. The consignment agreement, which allows enterprise to purchase vehicles on the town's behalf. The authorized signer form, which allows Enterprise Fleet Management to be the authorized signer for vehicle-related transactions. And the assignment agreement, which allows them to sell those same-town vehicles to capture the equity that we have still in them. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe Mr. Deland is here personally, if you'd like to ask questions. I believe Mr. Deland is here personally, if you'd like to ask questions from the perspective of Enterprise Fleet Management. Certainly, I want you to be as comfortable with this as we are at staff level. So don't feel like you have to do this tonight. I think it's an exciting opportunity and an interesting idea.
Everybody have any questions for this gentleman?
Hi, Matt, thanks for coming tonight. It's been a pleasure working with you. Several other towns and municipalities locally are using Enterprise. They've expressed, it's part of our due diligence, they're expressed satisfaction, and they, they feel like there's truly a cost savings to be had. So we look forward to your thumbs up, working with Enterprise, it's been good so far.
Hello. I think it's, this is a, this is a positive move forward. It doesn't, I mean, it makes sense to have more modern vehicles, better managed, better fuel efficiency, less maintenance, all of that. I think that makes a lot of sense. My questions were, even as how Dustin put it, the ten-year savings estimate, I understand it's an estimate, at fifty thousand a year, or forty-seven, six ninety-five, as it was listed in the documents, over a course of ten years, how does that get us to a million? And, and it looks like the first step we do is go from sixty-eight vehicles to sixty-three, which is about three hundred ninety-two thousand savings in the first year. So I just want to, I'm supportive of it, I think it makes sense for a lot of reasons. I just wanted to better understand if, how the economics work.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Thanks again for your time tonight. Appreciate you guys taking a look at the partnership with Enterprise, as other municipalities have in the area. As Wendy said, I actually, a lot of municipalities in the area, so Lake County, Cora County, Chapel Hill, Compton, the county parks, just a few, probably know, growing list of communities. To answer your question directly, the forty-seven, six ninety-five on the average sustainable savings, that is the math side of it. The average of the last five numbers in that net cash column. Essentially, the, the big picture of that is, that's your average sustainable savings. Once the existing owned fleet has been sold, and you've already received the proceeds of that, five years after that, what the program will look like, on average, you can be expecting to be saving just under fifty thousand dollars a year. So we, you know, want to show the first five years, but we also want to show the next five years. Once the existing fleet is gone, we no longer take any resale value from that, so.
So the, in the first five years, the changes we make, that has a much larger economic impact, but you're showing ongoing. It's about fifty thousand a year we can expect to save.
Correct, yeah, a lot of the total savings is from taking advantage of selling your currently owned vehicles while they're still worth a good amount of money versus the traditional paradigm. And a lot of government municipality on fleets, which is to hold on vehicles until they don't run. So that's, that's the main difference, yes. And then Enterprise will actually, not only advise you on when the best time to sell is, we can actually sell those vehicles, so.
And maybe that follow-up question was more for Dustin, is, is that right? There's five vehicles that we can basically retire now, we don't really need without replacing them, or my reading's slightly wrong.
I can, oh, yeah. Sorry, so in, in that analysis, just, I had a pull-up here. There's sixty-eight vehicles in the fleet today. The proposed fleet is sixty-three vehicles. There's five vehicles in our analysis without having the color in the background to as, how they're used, department, et cetera. Any vehicle that's driving less than twenty-five hundred miles per year is potentially marked as being underutilized. Chapel Hills, my other customers, I understand some vehicles have very specific purposes, and kids are on there in the summer, so that vehicle may need to stay in fleet. If there is a vehicle that's only driving five hundred or a thousand miles a year, it may be an opportunity to get that vehicle out of the fleet and just use it as a short-term rental to fulfill that need and maybe save some dollars that way. So, but most certainly, those five vehicles could also stay in the fleet. This is just based on numbers alone.
There's also an opportunity to right-size vehicles, right? And so maybe we need those five vehicles, but we don't need the same size. For example, the Jeep Grand Cherokee that is used as a pool vehicle, don't really need a full-size SUV. We could probably downgrade that to a, a smaller, more economical model, where the cost per mile is lower and the resale value is higher. So that is, is a kind of a microcosm of the whole model.
Yeah. Okay, and so thank you, appreciate that. And regardless, that first comment is that we're looking at fifty thousand sustainable, returnable savings per year, and we've got some good opportunities in the short term that we probably would not have looked at were it not for this effort. Thank you for answering those questions.
Is fleet management with a police vehicle different than a fleet management with public works versus parks? And is that taken into consideration?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. The, the vehicle lifecycle, or that sweet spot that Dustin had mentioned, is different for every vehicle in the fleet, or a three-quarter ton with a plow, versus SUV, versus a police interceptor with twelve thousand dollars worth of outfitting on it. So we take that all into account, and we, you know, we look at tons of those financial models and analysis on the backend, and we bring those recommendations to our customers. At the end of the day, it's really up to our customers to decide what the best lifecycle is for them, whether it's two years, three years, five years. And we're going to strongly recommend with the data that we have to make the, the financial prudent decision, but again, it's kind of a collaboration, so. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. Bring me back to the board here.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign the above-mentioned agreements, which are the master equity lease agreement, the consignment agreement, authorized signer form, and the assignment agreement to partner with Enterprise Fleet Management. There are second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Scoon.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor T. Lewitsky.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
That brings us to item D, Spyglass Telecom Audit.
So much like the Enterprise Fleet Management opportunity, this is another opportunity that Wendy brought to my attention. Spyglass is a firm that does audits of telecommunications. They have worked with many, many local units of local government in Indiana, in Illinois. There's a, there's a list of the Indiana partners that they've used. They basically just go through utility bills as an audit and look for fees that have been increased incorrectly, and then work on our behalf to get a refund. And how they get paid is they take a cut of that refund that would be paid to us.
So if they don't find anything?
They don't get anything.
Again, other local municipalities have used them, including Highland and Mr. Griffin have expressed pleasure. We work closely with Impact as far as telecommunications, and they've had positive experiences as well. And as Councillor Scoon said, if we save, if they save us ten bucks, they get, they get their piece and still save some money long-term, so.
Mr. President, then I vote that, I, I move that we authorize the town manager to sign an agreement and letter of agency to partner with Spyglass Telecommunications Cost Recovery Services. There are second.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
I have, I have a few questions on the Spyglass, maybe not surprisingly. I think it's a very interesting idea, similar to Enterprise Fleet Management. We probably wouldn't be looking at this if we weren't doing this. So I think it's definitely a good thing. Looking through the terms of how they pay you, though, and comparing that to what I used, what I used to do as a consultant. They're essentially running an audit on two months of our bills. And the first part, they get fifty percent of cost recovery, which I totally support. But things that we would not have found, that we shouldn't have been paying, in fact, we've already paid. And then we'll ask for a refund, they can have that, that's perfect. But the, my, my question, and they have a lot of references, so maybe a way to approach this is to get some references or talk to, I think you said Tom Highland has used it, I also saw the school, school town in Munster has used Spyglass as part of number seventy-seven on the references. The issue I wonder about is when they find something that should be eliminated, or an opportunity to reduce costs, if we do that as a town, within thirty days, we have to pay them twelve times of that, twelve times that monthly savings that they've created for us. Of course, in perpetuity, then after twelve months, we'll start making money on that. But they're basically capturing the first year of our savings on those things for their expertise and their audit. I imagine if we did a time and materials sort of, you know, what you would pay for a lot of our other vendors, depending on what they find, right? But that might be a much more economical way to do it. I understand that's their business model, it just, it just gave me a little bit of pause to say they find something in June, we cancel it in July, in August, all of a sudden, now we owe a year's worth of that savings.
If, if we choose to take advantage of that recommendation.
If we choose to take advantage. So we could also wait for a year and keep paying for something that we don't really need to, so we don't have to pay it to them. But another thing is while they're doing the audit, they said we cannot make any changes. We can't cancel any services when they start looking at it.
Well, canceling services and making changes to the telecommunication infrastructure of the town isn't something we do on a routine basis. And actually, we've, we've been collecting these invoices and bills kind of prospectively from the initial conversation, so. And in those, I think, six weeks since we've last talked to them and listened to that presentation, just kind of administratively said, just start making copies of the bills, we haven't made any changes. So I, I understand where the spirit of that question is coming from, but from a practical matter, it doesn't really cause me any kind of heartburn about changing the terms of service.
Is there any, right, we wouldn't, again, we wouldn't do it if we weren't doing this already. So by having the service, you know, they ought to get something for it. Any idea what kind of savings they typically find, like what's, is this a big material thing, or is this?
I think, you know, Wendy, feel free to jump in, but I think it really depends on the client that they're working with, the level of sophistication and diligence, and just kind of the circumstances around it, right? So there, the whole, like genesis of this is like organizations are extremely large and bureaucratic, and sometimes things slip through the cracks. And they, they've made a, a tiny business finding those little fees that have slipped through the cracks, and then bringing it to our attention and making their money, making money on the cost savings. I, it, so I think it really varies from client to client. Do you have a different recollection?
I, I don't, I don't even, I don't have a ballpark even to project out there. I, I like to think that we're a pretty tight machine and that we won't, they won't find much. My concern is something that's been going on for a while, that we catch it. I know when I first talked to Spyglass, it was over a year ago, and right away, we were able to identify a few things and make some tweaks without even getting them engaged, just the exercise of looking at our bills for a few months. So I think we got rid of some of the dead weight on the bill. So I don't anticipate it being tens of thousands, but it could be a thousand, couple thousand perhaps, but I really have no way of, we don't know until we, what we don't know, I'll say.
Yeah, and even if it's a couple thousand, that's a couple thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars that were paid to a, you know, multinational telecommunications corporation that they all not get. So that probably is better in Munster, regardless of the amount.
Which I totally get, but the problem is, we're going to pay twenty-four thousand dollars the month after we cancel that in order to get those. So I, I mean, I would just, I, I'd love to go forward with this. I would just like to understand maybe if the town of Highland or some other organization could give us a reference and understand a little more.
Happy to bring this back, if you'd rather just kind of put a pin in it. There, there's not a time-sensitive item at all, so we can certainly look for references and.
That would be my, you know, just.
In the references, I would be curious if there's any of those scenarios that Steve referenced. Like when you're talking Michael Griffin in Highland, have they, have they found something that's twelve months prospective, or they had to cut that check, right? And then had to realize the savings after month twelve? Are there any of those? I mean, those are really, I mean, because the rest of it is, you find it, you're saving us, they're not getting paid. So to Steve's point, it's the ones that are prospective, that you're kind of fronting that prospective savings. Are there any of those that the school town or Highland have found?
It looks like reading through it, they've got like a feed on our bills, and then as soon as it's cut, they cut us an invoice. They said they were cutting what, again, if it's small stuff and we're saving money, I think it's good, but I'd like to just understand that.
That's okay, that's fine. I'll contact a couple of people, random people, just on the list, not even necessarily local, but I'll look for some similar insights to our organization, make some calls, and we can put this back on in July.
Over tableing this? Oh, there's a motion on the table.
All right. So this motion to table takes precedence.
So I would then move to table this to the next public meeting, to table this matter to the next public meeting.
Was there a first and a second on this?
Yes, it's a second.
There was a first and a second on, on this.
Originally?
Until we got to the special.
Okay. Who seconded it?
I did.
Thank you, Mia.
Well, Steve would like to table this.
I'll, I'll second the motion table.
Okay, Steve and. To table, thank you.
On the table?
The table, yes.
How about, let's go with Councillor Scoon.
We, we vote first on the tape one, whether we table, and then we vote again. No, no, we vote once on the table.
On the table.
If it's tabled, we'll get it.
Okay. So we're going to table this, that's the motion on the floor.
Yes.
And Councillor Scoon, how do you vote? Thank you. Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor T. Lewitsky.
Yes.
And then President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero, we're going to table this probably to the end of July, Mr. Anderson.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, that second being, or the.
Wendy, I apologize, I've been a parliamentarian for eleven years.
You're fine.
And I thought you were asking a question.
No, you're fine. So I'm just going to look real quick at that date, the twenty-sixth, oh, no, the nineteenth of July.
We'll discuss this whenever you bring it back up.
All right, that's, well, I will, I will put a date in the minutes.
There you go.
We'll keep moving, all right?
All right, thank you.
Very good.
That requires a separate, a separate set of weeks.
Oh, no worries.
Brings us to item E, Resolution Twenty-eighty-three, Community Development Block Grant.
This is just part of the, it's, it's an agreement that the sixteen towns and cities in Lake County signed to be part of the group that participates in the CDVG grants. And we had the public hearing earlier, and now, as a council, we need to, you need to vote to accept this resolution and sign lots and lots of copies of it, please.
Beautiful, all right. Mr. President, I would make a motion to move or move to adopt Resolution Twenty-eighty-three and authorize the town manager execute fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four cooperative agreement as presented. There are second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Councillor Scoon.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor T. Lewitsky.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero, thank you.
Brings us down to item F, Resolution Twenty-eighty-four, Streetscape Plan.
All right, I am so pleased to be able to introduce this piece of work. I'm not going to steal Tom's thunder, he did all the heavy lifting on this with the steering committee. We have in attendance also the extraordinarily talented professional staff that worked with the town of Munster stakeholders. I, I am so proud of our community and that steering committee for undertaking this work with real diligence and real seriousness. I think it's an incredibly important piece of work for the town. I'm thinking of, right, even right now, right, with all the exits closed and all the traffic on Ridge Road, we are right now, by definition, a place you drive through, right? And this work is the first step in creating an environment, a built environment that matches the community spirit environment, that transitions and pivots towards a place we drive to. So with that, Tom is at the dais waiting for me to stop, so I will let him go.
Thank you, thank you, and good evening. That was a great introduction, Dustin. I'm just going to say that, yeah, tonight, we're presenting Resolution Twenty-eighty-four, which is a resolution which would adopt the Calumet Ridge Streetscape Plan. This is a plan that was distributed to the council last week in draft form, and I know there's been a number of versions that you've seen prior to that. In summary, this is a improvement and beautification program for Calumet Avenue, essentially from the Little Calumet River south to Briar Lane and for Ridge Road from the State Line Road to Columbia Avenue. I'll just note that the focus of this plan is the public right of way, it is not private property. It is the streets, the sidewalks, and the property that's already owned by the town. I'll also note that this project is about fourteen months in the making. I'll also note that this project is about fourteen months in the making, was formally kicked off in April of twenty-twenty in the midst of COVID-nineteen pandemic. And we made a number of changes, as you recall, in our public participation approach and our methodology. And I think we were able to really engage with the community in a very real and tangible way. We got a lot of great feedback from the community, from residents, from business owners. And that input was taken by staff and by our consultants and used to develop the recommendations that we're presenting tonight. So that being said, we will hear a presentation from Jody Mariano at TESCA Associates and Sarah Disney-Hoffey, Sam Schwartz. They'll present the process of the plan, the findings, and the recommendations. And then at the conclusion of that presentation, we would ask that the council adopt a resolution or approve rather, resolution twenty-eighty-four, a resolution adopting the Calumet Ridge Streetscape.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We're so thrilled to be here. So, and as you heard, my name is Jody Mariano. I'm a principal landscape architect with TESCA Associates. With me this evening is Sarah Disney-Hoffey, Director of Traffic Engineering at Sam Schwartz. Thank you so much for inviting us to your community to work on this effort. We worked with the staff and with the community at large and with our wonderful steering committee on a year-long effort, year-long bus, to visualize and document the streetscape plan for Calumet Avenue and Ridge Road. We recognize many and we trust this is the first time we're seeing this report because we've met and we've talked with many of you here in the room tonight. So this report, and I think, I'm hoping that everybody had a chance to see it at least. It documents our efforts and the work of our committee, our committee included folks in the room tonight. Councilman members, Scoon and Mellon, thank you for, for your assistance with the committee. Also, Don Arminger and Scott Mill, local business owners, are here this evening as well. So the purpose of tonight really is for us to give you a high-level overview of the streetscape planning efforts. A little bit about our process and the outcomes of that work and to answer any questions that you might have. You already heard about the study area. It is not a small corridor, and really, it's not one corridor, it's two. Calumet Avenue and Ridge Road couldn't be more different corridors from one another, but we're looking at Calumet Avenue from the Little Calumet River down to just past the Jalisco and the Ridge Road intersection. And we looked at Ridge Road from the state line all the way east to Columbia Avenue. Just as Tom mentioned, this is focused on the public rights of way only. We looked at the private properties just so that we can understand our context, but we really are only making recommendations here for the private, publicly controlled properties and the roadway, the sidewalks, and the parkways and the landscape spaces in between. So, from the get-go, the project goal that was already set forth by the town was to create a corridor that is more welcoming for walkers, for bikers, to reinforce a sense of place in Munster and to enhance the ability to absorb stormwater and reduce flooding in the area. We know that flooding has always been a concern in Munster, and so we wanted to see how we could accommodate that in the corridor plan. Some key themes are listed here, but again, similar themes to make it more safe and more comfortable for pedestrians to, to, to move through, to make this better for stormwater purposes, and to make it beautiful, to make it feel like you've arrived at a space. Right now, as Dustin mentioned, people are driving through the area and not feeling compelled to stop and, and, and visit your wonderful businesses in town. So, this is about trying to make it a more, more of a destination for people to move into. The streetscape plan is funded by what we call the Coastal Grant, but it's a very long name. It's the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration and the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Lake Michigan Coastal Program. So, that grant program also has very similar missions to create a streetscape that is more sustainable, more reflective of the stormwater management practices that Munster is also looking for. Our advisory committee is listed here. The town put together a great visionary committee. We spent many nights, long nights, speaking about the pros and the cons and reviewing what we heard from public inputs, looking at case studies, looking at all sorts of different pieces of information to formulate a plan that everybody could be proud of. A little bit about our outreach. So, as Tom mentioned, we were doing this all in a pandemic, and it's wonderful to be here tonight unmasked with everybody because when we started, we weren't that way. So just for reference, the committee met four times. Those are the items listed in red. We had three face-to-face masked or, or virtual face-to-face meetings with the community. We came to the community market last summer. We had a couple of open house meetings that were all virtual towards the end. And then in between, we also had touchpoints where we met with Public Works. Public Works is going to be the caretakers of the streetscape, so we needed to make sure that they were comfortable with recommendations, and they were very helpful as we selected things like, like whole concepts and that sort of thing. We also spent some time doing stakeholder interviews. We talked with residents, businesses, school town, Little Calumet River Development Organization, property owners, developers, some council members, Board of Zoning, and commission representatives. We really tried to cover our bases. We wanted to capture as much information as we could. And then separately, we also met with the agencies, so NICTD, NERC, NIPSCO, I'm getting all my acronyms, DNR and Little Calumet River. So, you know, we were able to, to, to get a lot of great feedback that all got baked into this plan. And then we had online interactions. We have a website that's still going and started about a year ago today. And that's been the clearinghouse for all the information, all of the meeting minutes, all of the information that has been worked on by the committee and displayed publicly, publicly has been posted to the website. We had two polls. Each poll had about five hundred participants, each with a whole host of individual comments. We learned so much from the community about those, and those were reviewed thoroughly by, by us and then also reviewed by the committee. And then we also had other things on our website, like a rendering tool where people are able to review specific renderings and provide their inputs. So as we've been moving through this program, we've been asking questions, hearing input, making it into the plan, making revisions, and kind of working through as we go. This has not been a linear process, it's been very circuitous, but it's gotten us to a point where, you know, the committee is comfortable with this plan to, to share with. So a couple of things, Calumet Avenue, we'll tackle first. Key concerns that came out of the first poll, and it's probably not a surprise, but Calumet Avenue moves at a very quick pace. It's not a comfortable place for pedestrians to walk along or across, or bikers either. It's, it needs a welcoming entrance. There's nothing along Calumet Avenue that says welcome to Munster in a literal sense and also in just a landscaped environmental sense, and it lacks greeting and previous spaces. So, Calumet Avenue has two lanes of traffic in each direction and a center turn lane. There is no plan to change that. That would operate exactly as it does today. That said, there's a lot of space that is paved today that could be translated or transferred into landscaping. So for instance, the spaces between the sidewalks and the back of curb where that planter is on the bottom, those could be landscaped with trees and lawn. Similarly, there's spaces in between the road where we have striped areas or areas that do not necessarily need to have left turn lanes. That could be turned into landscaped medians. And so as an example of what that looks like, this is coming over the bridge here. River Road is on my right. If it were treated, the types of things that we've been looking at are, there's that landscaped median in the middle that I had mentioned. Also opportunities for mid-block crossings. Mid-block crossings are intended to support the crossing movements that are already happening today. In talking with school town, we understand that there are a lot of crossing movements that really do need to happen, that are already happening. So this is making it more supported by things like advanced warning signage, paint, trees and landscaping, things that calm the traffic and slow it down and make for a safer place for people to cross. Other aesthetic things that are recommended here are things like the steel back to timber rails, the landscaped entryway sign on the left, banners, new light poles, new trees. But suffice it to say, Calumet really isn't intended to function any differently. It's just to take the existing paved space and turn it to landscape where we can. Moving on to Ridge, Ridge Road was a little bit more complicated. Ridge Road is the place where there are a lot of businesses. There's a lot of places where businesses are very close to the street. And we also have places like Marcos, for instance, on the bottom, where they are putting out outdoor dining and seating. Especially in the last year, we've understood how important it is to have those outdoor spaces. More and more people are using outdoor sidewalks and walking paths, and we want to make sure that we provide space for that. So in the early outreach activities, some of the things that we heard, similar to Calumet, Ridge Road is just not comfortable. There's businesses that are great, but nobody is feeling compelled to stop and shop in those businesses because the environment just doesn't support that. Things like on-street parking, things like landscaped walkways, outdoor dining, wider sidewalks are the types of things that people called out for. And so as we started to listen to the messages that we were hearing, it seemed like there was an opportunity to do something more transformational on Ridge Road. To Dustin's point earlier, rather than a place to just drive through, this could be a place that could become a destination. So what we started to look at is what's called a road diet, basically taking four lanes of traffic, two in each direction, and reallocating two of those four lanes to be a multi-use bike path, wider sidewalks, on-street parking, streetscaping and landscaping. Sarah is gonna speak to the, the tough stuff, the technical details of surrounding traffic. But we do believe that through the modeling that's been done, that this is something that is very realistic for Munster. So this provides us a much more welcoming place. It provides us a landscaped median, it provides parkways, it provides us mid-block crossings, and also reducing some curb cuts. I'm gonna just show what that looks like when it speaks to the traffic. So for instance, this is coming up to where the Monon Trailhead is, where the new train depot is planned. And so you can see the sidewalk at the bottom here, and in the proposed condition, one lane of traffic on each side would become reallocated for wider sidewalks, multi-use trail on the south side, just a wider sidewalk on the north side, and then a landscaped parkway in this section. In other sections, the new landscaped parkway would be on-street parking. So these would be the types of things that make it for a much more walkable, bikeable, business-friendly environment.
Hello, as Jody mentioned, my name's Sarah Disney-Hoffey with Sam Schwartz. And our role on this project was to support the development of the streetscape plan by looking specifically at the transportation operation for these two corridors. So, as Jody mentioned, we prepared a traffic model. That model did include both Calumet Avenue and Ridge Road, but we did see this particular opportunity on Ridge Road, given a few hints that I'll get into. I'll, I'll first mention that our model did include input from a lot of local agencies, from NERC, from NICTD, and from the RDA, so that we could account for the influence of major infrastructure improvements that are already planned, like the Forty-Fifth Street project that the town is undertaking and the new South Shore Line depot that will be installed close to Manor and Ridge, and also so that we could consider both local and regional growth and its effect on local traffic volumes and patterns. So, when we started this project at the outset, we saw an opportunity on Ridge Road to consider a potential reconfiguration of that cross-section because the daily traffic volume that the Indiana DOT has documented for this street is within a range that, as traffic engineers, we view as a rule of thumb as an opportunity for this road diet. And it's also notable that the daily traffic volume on Ridge Road over the last ten years or so has been decreasing. So, we wanted to take a closer look at what this might mean for the Ridge Road corridor. So we investigated further, looking at two different options for the future of travel on Ridge Road. We considered all of this growth and the changing travel patterns into the future. If we left Ridge Road as it is, with two travel lanes in each direction and a center-left turn lane, and then we also considered a scenario with this road diet option, where it would be one travel lane in each direction and a center-left turn lane, and compared the two, so that we could get an idea of what's the difference in travel time for these two different options. And what we're estimating is that the influence would be an additional one to three minutes of travel time on Ridge Road. And we presented that information to the community and to the committee, saying this is an opportunity that could be available. This is what the implication is in terms of auto travel along Ridge Road. And these are the amenities that could be captured if that space is reallocated to other uses rather than a travel lane for vehicles. And the feedback that we received was that the majority of respondents wanted to see that road diet option in place on Ridge Road. So given that, we integrated that into our recommendations for the study. And we also, in speaking with town staff, saw an opportunity to extend that key theme that was touched on earlier, that balance of access and mobility and safety along community streets. And so we created a toolbox that could be applied beyond the limits of where we started, with Calumet Avenue and Ridge Road being our focus, to implement traffic calming and promote safety for the broader traveling public, drivers, pedestrians and cyclists along all town streets, so that this theme could be carried into the neighborhoods and really create a cohesive transportation network for the community. So, given that, I'll hand it back to Jody to remind you what those visuals look like, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. So, to get to the fun stuff. If you've noticed, all of those renderings magically made all of the overhead wires disappear. And so we did investigate that as well, and we investigated that there happened to be four different kinds of overhead utility types on Calumet Avenue. So, our partners at Sam Schwartz have been doing some cost estimating on the different ways to relocate those overhead wires. We were able to come up with some high-level costs. Option A is to take all of those wires and remove them and bury them underground. That is a very, very high number. Option B is to take those overhead wires and relocate them, and the relocation would have to be done in a very careful way. There are some places where they could be relocated to the backs of buildings, to Eastmans or to alleys. There are some places where those things are gonna have to be negotiated, but that number seemed to be a much more realistic cost, especially given that there is another large cost associated with reconstructing these roads altogether. So we did also some high-level costs, looking at indoor unit pricing, considering a contractor, general contractor form of delivery. Ridge Road is a very long road. It's seven thousand linear feet between, in our study area here. Calumet is a shorter distance, forty-six hundred linear feet. And so we looked at the layers of construction and what the, those typical costs would be. And it gets us down to a fairly large number, and it's worth mentioning that nobody ever builds streetscapes like this all at once. This is a very large undertaking. It's the kind of thing that gets done in bite-sized chunks and phases. But the benefit of doing it in this way and documenting everything that has been documented as far as public outreach goes, is that this positions Munster very well to seek grants and funding. It's, it's, it's a large undertaking for sure, but it's the kind of thing that other communities have had success with when they do it in small bite-sized pieces. So the Ridge Road total estimated construction would be about twenty million, Calumet Avenue about thirteen million. We did come up with our committee working on what we call near-term, midterm and long-term type of projects that could be undertaken for each Calumet Avenue and Bridge. So these are much more feasible things to do in the near term. On Calumet Avenue, some near-term projects that people got very excited about was the North Gateway sign that I presented in that rendering. That could be a pilot project. That's in the range of fifty thousand dollars. It's a, it's a construction of a sign and some landscaping, so very feasible. The other things that can be done in the near term are just re-striping where those landscaped medians would go. That would help start to tell cars where to go, and it, striping goes, goes a really long way to influence some traffic calming and also start to train folks as to how they use the street, where pedestrians can cross. Left turns, we didn't really talk about left turns, but there are some places, especially as we are recommending landscaped medians, where the left turns will be more controlled. There will be some curb cuts that will be restricted from an all-access to just a right-in, right-out access. And so that also will go a long way to make this a calmer, safer place for people to, to use the road. Other things like on the east side of Calumet Avenue, replacing the light poles, parkway plantings and trees can be done, cleaning up the overhead cables. There's still things that NIPSCO has talked with us about doing that aren't as costly, but just cleaning up the overhead wires can be done. And then undertaking a phase-one engineering study, we didn't mention it, but this is a concept level plan. Does have detail to it, but it really is not an engineering study by any means, phase-one engineering study that needs to be done before any construction. So that would be something in the near term. So that would be something in the near term. Other midterm and long-term type things include the signalized intersection improvements. And then longer term, we can think about constructing Calumet pieces. So the area north of Broadmore could be a phase, the area south of Broadmore could be a phase. A similar kind of approach on Ridge. The pilot project would be that area along Meadow Lane, within that kind of core district. People got very excited about a place in downtown Munster to have small festivals and events. There were some local businesses that said, you know what? We would really love to have a small music fest or to have a small fest. So this would be the kind of thing that could happen on Meadow Lane. Similarly, to what we talked about on Calumet, restriping the roadway, putting in those left turn controls, addressing the signalized intersections, cleaning up the overhead cables, and then doing the Phase 1 engineering. And then as far as carving up Ridge Road, doesn't have to be done all at once. It could be done in the area west of Calumet first, and then the area east of Calumet second. Even the areas west of Calumet could be broken up into further phases. So with that, I know we kind of kept this kind of high level, but we do have the report loaded, and we're happy to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess my, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Jody and Sarah, thank you very much for your efforts. I see members of the committee in here, too, Don and Scott, right in front. I appreciate all your helps with this. This plan, I think, is one of those plans that does start building, is the building blocks for creating and sustaining the healthy, active, and engaged community. And I think it's a great plan that we need to look at. When people look to move to towns, businesses move to towns, they look for vibrant, active communities, they look for schools, and also public safety. And I think this plan does really create that vibrant, active community. And just as important as what this plan is, is what Sarah mentioned about the addendums of this, is the safety, traffic, speed reducers, and some of the traffic calming devices that are going to be needed in the surrounding areas. And I appreciate you taking a better look at that also. So overall, I think the streetscape plan is fantastic. I think it brings a lot of opportunities to the town of Munster and also to bring some entrepreneurial spirit to the downtown once the public does the public right always.
Yeah, I guess I would also like to thank everyone, but Jody and Sarah, like to work with someone who has so much joy and talent and skill and an open mind to hear things. There was nothing that you wanted to, that had to happen, right? From you, it was all a reflection of what you heard. And an open heart, it's really great to be able to work with this. And then this is an extension of stuff that's been going on. The previous council created a new zoning ordinance at the leadership of Dustin and Tom, that made a lot of this stuff possible. We're starting to see different types of developers come. Maple Leaf Crossing is cool. Dustin, we've done the 45th Underpass. You've taken elements from that work that we've done and incorporated it, like the streetlights, so people can think of that. Everything is really integrated, and this is also inspiring. The train, how it's coming, how the depots are going to look, the bicycle bridge that Steve Hammond has, is building, and we're contributing to. They allowed us to bring in TESSCA, right?
That's right. We were so thrilled.
Influence that design. And everything that is happening and what this town will look like when you drive to, not through Munster, in 10, 20 years from now, is because of this work. So really, thank you. I did have one question that was interesting. You said the traffic on Ridge Road has actually been going decreasing in the past 10 years. And I know lately, you know, in the summer, when we get construction on the Boorman, or, you know, accident, people like to come off and then use Ridge Road. So in the past couple of weeks, it's been pretty busy at times. So I'm wondering, and then you said you took into account the train, and houses are selling like pancakes, right? People are moving into this area, so local growth. I just wonder if you could give a little color for like, what's been driving it down? And what's it going to be in the next decade?
Sure. So I'll speak first to the overall traffic volume. So every few years, the Indiana DOT goes out and records what the amount of daily traffic is on many roadways in the area. On Calumet, it's been ticking up a little bit every year. I think it's about 1.4% a year the traffic increases. On Ridge Road, it's been decreasing. At the west end, I believe the decrease since 2012 was about 10%. And, I'm sorry, 21%. And then on the east end, a little bit east of Calumet, the decrease was about 10% of a drop. And so I'm not sure what the exact influences are since 2012 that have been contributing to that. But suffice it to say, the travel that we've been seeing from people commuting and taking their daily trips dropped substantially then when we hit the pandemic early last year. And so that's also going to play out. And we'll see that people's commuting patterns are probably going to be changed permanently. And this is a real opportunity to capture that opportunity on Ridge Road, to make it into the corridor that you want, that has a balance of multimodalism, while still promoting mobility and access. But when you are in proximity to a high-mobility freeway, like the Boorman, and people see that there's an alternative, you can train them, that this is a cut-through, that they can use if there is a little bit of congestion or a reason for them to divert. So as Dustin so eloquently put earlier on, you don't want to teach people that Munster's a place to drive through. You want to teach them this is a destination. And so you don't want to design your roadway to facilitate high-speed travel. That's one of the things we heard from the community here, that they're concerned about both the safety implication and there's that business implication, too, of people traveling through at a high rate of speed. So there's that element of what you asked, but also we're talking about the local growth that's going on here. So we did coordinate with the Regional Development Authority. We understand that there is a lot of interest in developing in Munster and having that train station there. And through the code that was implemented by the prior council, there is room for additional transit-oriented development that will have people using the train, but some people will drive from those communities, too. So we accounted for the additional residential development, the office development that may come in, some commercial development, and integrated that into our traffic model. We also considered that there are people who are going to be driving to and from that train station every day. And so it will have an influence on the traffic patterns on Manor. All of that was wrapped into what we looked at, so that we could be sure we were not looking at this at a very high level. We were very specifically considering the influences that Munster's going to see in the next few years, so that the model would accurately represent what the implications are. And as we mentioned, it's not, we aren't coming to saying, oh, there's going to be no difference in the travel conditions. It will be a slightly slower corridor. But in the grand scheme of things, we believe that is reflective of what the town wants, simply because that's what we heard in the feedback. We didn't come recommending something. We just came presenting the comparison of the two and reacted to the feedback that we got from the public and from the committee.
I thank you very much for that answer. I think as people have walked on either of those two streets, it is kind of fast and furious now, especially in the hot sun. And to go to calm and comforting from fast and furious, I think will be really a big change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Say you. I gotta go back to the pages. Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 2084, Resolution adopting the Calumet Ridge Streetscape Plan.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Are there any additional comments?
Counselor Schoen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Absolutely.
Five to zero.
Great job, everybody.
It's a beautiful plan, it's a lot of work.
All right, there are no reports tonight. Are there any portfolio reports, anybody without a share? All righty, brings us down to announcements. All town council meetings will begin at 7:00 PM unless otherwise noted. June 28, there is no meeting. July 5, there is no meeting. July 12, there is no meeting. July 19, there's a regular Town Council Development Commission meeting. July 26, there is no meeting. August 2, a regular Town Council Development Commission meeting. Brings us down to adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Ken got this one.
I got Ken and then Chuck.
I have a first.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again for attending.
Andy, I think we might have some more here for covering possibly.
Hey guys, you guys need a photograph? Students, proof of life?
Any students who would like a photograph?
Sales autograph for $5 apiece. All funds go into the general fund. Into the K9 donation pot.
They're going to get salvaged.
Oh, they're going to, okay. Andy's like.
Yeah.
No, I know. I, but if someone else. You're not going to do it. No, I didn't. You're not like, I know. You ask the question.
You know what I mean?
Did I raise my voice? I said, let's go.
You spoke sternly to me.
Oh, if you think that's stern, if you think that's stern.
It was worse than yelling. It was the quiet, dead voice. It looked different, buddy, man. Guys, I got you, see?
Did you go bust chips in the car, too? Or is it chips, or what was it, Dustin?
I called Counselor Gardner and just, you know, at the end of the week for the council meeting. And my oldest son thought it would be an opportune time to take advantage of reaching his long arms into the snack bag in the front seat while I was distracted. No, no, no. I know my counselor's a parent, and he would appreciate and respect my diligence. Drop the chips, kid.
I think now is part of it. I think that was, yeah, should have been.
Well, the context of the, I let him eat a half a sleeve of Pringles. That's.
Once you pop, you can't stop.
Well, clearly, clearly.
I'm going to send an email to Mr. Pringle, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, right. Probably sent me a case of free Pringles.
If Wendy's a virtual participant, no.
I love it.
Yeah.
It's the longest meeting for most waiting for the meeting to start. Oh, I don't mind. I just, I, you know, the bad pull for the high school kids. The kids last year were like, it was like 20 minutes, no problem, just go.
And they're like, oh, man.
Yeah. I agree. I don't know if you appreciate that when you're 17. Sure. And now the streetscape presentation.
My thing is, I never saw, my son was a teacher this year, and I never saw him. And I don't know, he must have just zoomed in secretly, because he didn't want, I know he probably thought, knowing my mom, she'll probably be like, hi, man. So I said, wow, you've gone through that. And I never, I was, I've been looking forward to this for years. He didn't come. Oh, thank you.
Maybe he's hanging on a tongue so he can come to that one.
Exactly. It's like this sleepy little girl.
You need a lot of signatures. Wow, wow, boy, to clear the room.
I know, I was just saying.
Ready?
I am ready.
I'd like to bring the Redevelopment Commission regular meeting for June 21, 2021. Two order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowinski.
Present.
And Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present.
And our school board liaison, John Castro.
Present.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Brings us down to open to the public. Does anybody wish to speak tonight? Is there anybody online, Dustin?
There is none.
All right, I will close the open to the public. That brings us on to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowinski.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
There's nothing under old business, under new business. We have Resolution 54, virtual meetings.
Same as what we just passed for the Town Council, except for the Redevelopment Commission, which is a slightly different one.
All right, say you.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings, to adopt Resolution 54 on first reading as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
There's really only one. It's a resolution, so there is only one meeting. So there's really, you're not suspending the rules, you're just passing this. And it's, the only reason you have to do this for redevelopment is that Redevelopment Commission is a separate statutory, political, and municipal entity. Same rules apply. Separate and apart from the town. So like, where the town has a planning commission, the town technically doesn't have, I mean, they have a Redevelopment Commission, but it's a separate, it's not under the umbrella of the town, it's separate in the state.
Do they have to reword this in any way, or?
No, I mean, just that we're not really suspending any rules.
Okay, this is a resolution, not an ordinance.
That's correct.
Roll call.
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowinski.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
There are no announcements. That brings us down to adjournment.
I move that may adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Okay. Repeat for attending.
Thank you.
And now we're going to the Civic Foundation. I'm going to move some of the tables around so that we can be all down there.
And signatures, I want to start this with you, Steve, and then we'll work it back this way. No, well, oh, it doesn't matter. And then Andy, I've got a stack for you.
You got a stack for me? All right. Stack, stack.
I'm out. Yeah. The president of the Civic Foundation told me that I could go home.
He did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He did.
I told him he can go. I thought the taxes were on.
He's in a good mood today, I tell you.
I don't know.
Geez.
That's why you wanted to talk about the Resolution 54, because you want to stay here longer.
We're just bringing two movies cheering on the other side that we can all just be around these four tables. Okay?
Thanks.
No, thank you.
Move this one up a little bit.
Nice watermark.
Yeah, that, the town manager's office. That hooking dice. What will we do with all of our old stationery?
Burn it. Oh, recycle it, I'm sorry.
Dustin, I have a stack for you to sign as well, please. Right over here at the top door. Oh, I didn't pull this by glass.
I'm going to sit down here with everybody else. You guys.
I am, too.
I'm just signing right now, so.
Do we have a lot more to sign?
We've got a lot to sign tonight. Andy's got a ton. And you guys have to sign top 10 things.
Okay, let's, so you keep people. So we're good. People that have taken time are reading a little longer than normally here.
Because Steve talked too much. I mean, I don't know. Sorry, Steve.